Welcome everyone to tonight's Monday, July 26, 2021 virtual regular meeting of the Livermore City Council. We're at seven o'clock now. We just came back from a closed session starting at 5:30. How to participate in the meeting under the COVID rules is given at the end of the agenda. And we'll, as we go along, also explain how to participate in the meeting. So right now, could we have a roll call for the regular session?
Yes, Mayor. For the record, Councilmember Bonanno has an excused absence. Councilmember Carleen?
Here.
Councilmember Kick?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Monroe?
Here.
Mayor Werner?
Here.
Thank you.
And then next up is the pleasures of allegiance. You can follow along with me on mute. So we normally, we have we got the flag. So I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, we're on to item. First of all was city attorney. Was there any reportable action taken in the closed session?
Mr. Mayor, no, there was not.
Okay, thank you. We're on to item two of the agenda, which is the update from Tracy Farhad, President and CEO of Visit Tri Valley on the local recovery campaign, quote, "to Livermore with love." So thank, we have the staff report and perhaps just Tracy. Thank you.
Good evening, council members. Mayor Werner, Adam Van De Water, your Director of Innovation Economic Development. I'm pleased to introduce Tracy Farhad, the President and CEO of Visit Tri Valley. And if I can, I'll share my screen. I'll turn it over to Tracy. Is Tracy?
I am here. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Oh, great. Good evening, and thank you so much, Adam. Thank you, and good evening, Mayor Werner, city council members, city staff, and members of the public. I'm delighted to share with you the final marketing results of the To Livermore With Love Local Recovery Campaign and made possible in partnership with the four other cities in the Tri Valley, Pleasanton, Dublin, San Ramon, and the town of Danville. So thank you for participating in this regional promise campaign to help shed light on the local businesses that needed extra help out of the pandemic. Your collaboration has made all the difference, and we consider it a high five success. Next. So tonight, I'm going to show you the overall creative and performance results for To Tri Valley With Love, and then key performance indicators specific to Livermore. We will also make this PowerPoint available to all of you for your, your review later, so you don't have to take extra notes. But as your marketing agency of record, Visit Tri Valley provided the framework to leverage all of your combined resources, stretch investments, and create a bigger message to the region. The campaign To Tri Valley With Love was created to connect us to each other, to our neighbors and our hometowns, pulling on heartstrings to make a promise to spend a little extra where we work, play, and live across two counties and five city-town borders. The campaign ran for two months, May through June, across multiple platforms and media channels, both paid and earned. So we created commercials. We had three of them. We had a wonderful mayor's commercial. And by the way, Mayor Werner, you did an outstanding job on that commercial. Thank you so much for coming together. That was no small feat, getting all five mayors together in one room. Not the same time, we're definitely COVID safe. And then we also created these two other overall campaign commercials, and they were to really entice and get the folks out to spend money and support the locals. And they ran on broadcast television, employing, employing those residents to spend and take advantage of the main call to action, which was the Free Promise Pass. Here's an example of one of the commercials. I don't know if you can hear it at all, but as you can tell, it went through and it gave those descriptions and let you know how you could participate. Now, in addition to commercial airtime, we've negotiated value-added PR through sponsorship, news ticker and teasers, plus an onsite California Live segment. Our number one call to action for measuring KPIs was the To Tri Valley Promise Pass. It's a free download of deals and discounts at over 130 businesses. As of just last week, the Promise Pass, now named the Tri Value Pass, it has over 2,600 signups and 290 redemptions. Sixty-four businesses have redeemed coupons some multiple times, with Livermore capturing five of the top performers at a restaurant, winery, hotels, and activity. This shows the top 15 origin cities out of 68 across five states and two countries, the U.S. and China. Livermore ranked fifth in resident downloads and redemptions. And as you can see, the campaign reached far outside the Tri Valley as well. Here's some quick coupon facts for you, because you may not know this, but a large percentage of people use and search for coupons online before they purchase. And what we love to see is that coupon users spend more than they normally would have, and they become repeat customers. And if you're anything like me, you forget to use it. I was at Strizzi, so I forgot to use it, but I made a date night out of it and headed over to the Livermore Theater Performing Arts Center for a movie that night. So I'm pretty sure there are a few others like, like myself out there. Now to the overall campaign performance metrics. So social media click-through rate and engagement really rocked our benchmark, benchmark numbers. And again, with Pandora Radio showing super strong results. And of the 500,000 Tri Valley listeners on Pandora, I bet you didn't know only 4% opt out of the ads. And last but not least, search engine marketing showed a nearly three to one return. Print delivered on all the impressions for awareness, and commercials aired 486 times for four times that exposure. Digital impression showed strong engagement, and that's without even counting their website or our search numbers. And we were pleased to see total website stats to date almost 30,000 visits just to this dedicated campaign. So now let's talk about PR next. Extra PR efforts on top of paid media resulted in 14 outlets covering the campaign across 17 million monthly potential earned impressions. That was good PR. Now, this is one of my favorite slides, because it talks about how all Gold lever participating promises or partners were promised 11 million paid impressions. We overdelivered by 11%. That wasn't even including social media and any promotional efforts by your city staff, without whom, by the way, this campaign could not have been as successful. So I want to give a special shout out to Adam Van De Water and his team. Now, with all five jurisdictions pooling their contributions, if you can go back just one more for me, Adam. Thank you. With all five pooling their contributions and with Visit Tri Valley's matching funds, a final campaign valuing $310,000 was delivered, and this represents a 248% return on your collective investment. I call that a win-win. Now for Livermore's specific results. Deliverables included a dedicated website, exclusive commercials, direct mail advertisements, and social media. To LivermoreWithLove.com directed locals to download the Free Promise Pass and view participating businesses' deals and discounts. We highlighted your Gift Livermore program to help drive additional sales to that successful shop local initiative. Your greatest website referral source shows an amazing awareness and retention of the campaign itself, because nearly three out of every four visitors typed the URL To Livermore With Love directly into their, into their computer. That's pretty good. Radio placed a distant second, but it was still ahead of social. We also provided two other commercials and a city-specific commercial. And you can see here, we were able to place two and a half times the promised spots. And even the QR code on a commercial on TV captured a few fans. So here are some samples of the digital creative, including banner ads and social media posts that were sent on behalf of your participating businesses. Pandora delivered the way, way above the engagement benchmark for Livermore as well, even when online publications were a little softer. So social media boosted posts, continually pushed awareness with a really good engagement rate as well. Now, last but certainly not least, your direct mail postcard. We sent to all Livermore households, and that established the campaign messaging at the very get-go. It reinforced continued savings through the Gift Livermore program, too. Print creative, creative, included a full-page spread in The Independent, plus placements in Diablo Magazine, Pleasanton Weekly, Your Town, all delivering strong-on impressions. So in summary, campaign elements continually reinforced the key messaging needed to attract attention spans across multiple platforms. Livermore garnered more than 669,000 impressions, 1,400 website, direct website sessions, 22% engagement rate, and a small but loyal resident base spending while feeling good about keeping their neighbors afloat. So I want to thank you, City of Livermore, for joining forces, getting the word out, and investing in your economic recovery. We're proud to have been an integral part in helping our communities thrive while enduring an international crisis. So thank you so much for your time.
Okay, well, thank you. And it looks like the campaign was very successful, and that's great news. Any other comments from the council at this point? Okay, well, thank you so much, and looking forward to more good stuff from you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members. Have a good night.
Hey, you, too. All right, we're on to Agenda Item Three, Citizens Forum. The city clerk will announce, or just tell people how to participate, if you could, please.
Yes, Mayor. When participating in this portion of tonight's meeting, one comment may be given per person per item. Members of the public can participate by using the raise hand feature, star nine if calling in, when the item begins. Please do not wait until the public comment period opens for each item to raise your hand. Instead, raise your hand as soon as the item is introduced. Once public comment opens, each participant's name will be announced, and their three minutes will begin upon being unmuted. The mayor will announce the conclusion of public comment period after comments have been voiced into the record.
Okay, thank you. I'll just point out that we allocate a half, up to a half an hour at this point in the agenda for a public comment. If we go past that, you know, we'll continue later on in the meeting. And I've seen it's about 7:15 now, so I've seen the number of hands raised. I don't think we have a problem, but we'll cut off the public comment at 7:45, and the city clerk will let us know when we get up to that at the five-minute level. So, okay, we have the first people. I'll open the citizens forum now, and can we have the first person, please?
Honorable Mayor, the first speaker will be Art Ponto, followed by Donna Caban, followed by Carrie Olds. Art Ponto, please unmute yourself.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, city staff, and public. I'm Art Ponto, Chair of your Livermore Library Board of Trustees, and I'm here to celebrate the recent arrival of our new library director, Anwan Baker. He joins us as an accomplished leader among librarians and brings us experience from diverse locations, including Glodei, California, Berkeley, and Savannah, Georgia, three very different places. Right now, he's, he's drinking from the fire hose, learning about our city and our library. He's meeting with every single member of the library staff to gain perspective on all we're doing well and where we might be able to bring new value to the community. I had a chance to meet with Director Baker again today, and I'm excited about the enthusiasm and perspective he brings to our city's management team. He's focused on building upon our strong existing foundation and partnering with several community organizations to do even more. The pandemic has been a tough time for all of us, and we can look forward to an exciting future with our new library director. We're back. The branches and Civic Center are up and running in our pre-pandemic hours, except for Sundays at Civic Center, which are coming soon. The summer reading program is going strong, and it's definitely not too late to read another book or two. So during my visit today, I got to experience part of a music and movement session with young kids and their parents in the grassy area outside the Civic Center Library. The vitality and enthusiasm were heartening. So in closing, I want to invite everyone to come on down and visit one of our branches or the Civic Center Library sometime soon. Come find out what's in it for you. If you happen to see Anwan Baker, please extend a hearty Livermore welcome, and join me in expressing gratitude to all the library staff for continuing to serve our community during these challenging months. Thank you.
The next speaker is Donna Caban, followed by Carrie Olds, followed by Jackie Coda. Donna Caban, please unmute yourself.
Good evening. The city plans to release treated contaminants into the Eden Housing underground parking garage. Is this a good idea? The consultant for the water board doesn't think so. The water board report states that the proposed cleanup levels for subsurface volatile organic compounds, DOCs, are neither appropriately justified or acceptable. The contamination issues surrounding Eden Housing subsoil just continue to grow and grow. The city's proposed remediation is clearly inadequate. The city must answer the water board concerns about the underground parking structure. Will there be contamination pathways from the garage to upper floors? Can a consistent air pressure differential be maintained inside the garage? How will garage operation be maintained and monitored over time to prevent contamination? Moreover, the water board states that the subsurface utilities can transport subsurface contamination. How will utility contamination be addressed? The city failed to describe how odor, staining, and elevated readings will be used to ident, to identify problems. As for dangers to our drinking water, how has the city determined that only 50% cleanup of the groundwater is sufficient? At this juncture, the city's proposed remediation and mitigation for the cleanup of soil, groundwater, and the use of underground parking are completely inadequate. The council has already allocated an additional $245,000 to back the substandard Eden Housing proposal. It's time for the city to come clean with the public. What are the total cleanup costs for Eden Housing after water board requirements? What percentage will be paid directly or indirectly by current residents? Let the public vote whether they want to pay these very expensive costs. Isn't the safest solution to move Eden Housing off the site? Hold a public hearing about Eden Housing cleanup. Post all communications with the water and air boards concerning Eden Housing on the city website. We, the residents, have a right to know the extent of the contamination, the duration, and total cost of cleanup, and how much money residents will ultimately pay to build Eden Housing at this site. Thank you.
The next speaker is Carrie Olds, followed by Jackie Coda. Carrie Olds, please unmute yourself.
Good evening. My name is Carrie Olds. I am the Program Manager for the Mills on Wheels program with Spectrum Community Services. We serve the Tri Valley. Since then, in February of 2020, we were serving 195 seniors. Today, we are serving 266 seniors between the three cities. As you can imagine, that continues to be a big need for volunteers. And so I'm here tonight to remind people that if they would like to volunteer, to reach out to me via my volunteer email, which is M-O-W@SpectrumCS.org. Once a person is cleared through the volunteer process, they can join us out on the routes and deliver to our seniors. We are currently between the three cities, serving 18 routes a day. So that is a big challenge, make sure we have those people cleared to do so. I want to invite and encourage the city to help us in a fundraiser. Yafa Humus has stepped up to host a fundraiser for us on August the third at both locations, both the Livermore and the Dublin location, between 4:00 and 9:00 p.m. No need for a flyer or to mention that you're there for Spectrum. We will receive part of the sales for the night. So anyone that is eating out that night, it's a good way to support local business, but also to support Spectrum. So we do appreciate your help with that. And then again, I just wanted to make sure that we express our appreciation to the city council, to the mayor, to the community, to everyone that has helped us be able to continue to serve our seniors without a break in service. That is one thing we were ultimately so proud of, is that we did not miss a day of service during this COVID pandemic, and we will continue to do all that we can to make sure that the seniors of the Tri Valley are served and kept well in their homes. Thank you.
Thank you. Could you repeat how to contact you for volunteering and donations?
Sure. So to volunteer, you're going to want to reach me at my email, which is M-O-W@SpectrumCS.org. If you are interested in doing a direct donation, you can go to our website, which is spectrumcommunitieservices.org, and we have a Donate Here button. Or if you send me a message through that email, I can get you any information that you need. I am the Program Manager, and I take care of the Tri Valley. So I am your main contact out here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jackie Coda, please unmute yourself.
America's frontline doctors have filed a motion on July 19th seeking immediate injunctive relief to stop the emergency use authorization of the COVID-19 experimental synthetic injections for three groups of Americans, anyone under the age of 18, anyone who's recovered from COVID, and those who haven't given informed consent as defined by federal law. The motion was filed against Javier Becerra, Secretary of the Department of HHS, and other defendants in federal court in the Northern District of Alabama. The emergency declaration and its multiple renewals are illegal, the complaint alleges. The complaint alleges that the legal requirement to issue and maintain COVID-19 vaccine EUAs aren't being met. First, there's no underlying emergency. We've been under emergency orders for over 16 months, and the emergency orders were initially declared because of potential extreme peril. We have never seen that, and no serious or life-threatening disease or condition has been ever experienced. According to the defendant's data, the CCP virus has an overall survivability rate of 99.8% globally, on par with the seasonal flu. However, the defendant's data has been extremely propagandized by fraudulent bureaucrats, and we are tired of being under an emergency use authorization, because it's irrelevant. There's no reason for anyone to be getting an experimental injection with a survivability rate of 99.8%. Second, the COVID-19 experimental injections aren't effective in diagnosing, treating, or preventing a disease or condition, which fails other requirements for issuing, maintaining EUAs. It is important to note that the vaccines were only shown to reduce symptoms, not block transmission, and now we see fraudulent bureaucrats blaming the unvaccinated for the vaccinated getting COVID-19. That's very interesting, that the unvaccinated is doing just fine without having synthetic injections put into their bodies, but yet people who are receiving the synthetic injections are. Not only that, there is a whistleblower testimony. Forty-five thousand deaths are actually the actual number from just one reporting mechanism that the CDC has been withholding. Jane Doe, a computer programmer with expertise in healthcare data analytics, filed a sworn statement indicating that the actual number of deaths following the vaccination is about 45,000. Quote, "It is my professional estimate that the VAERS database, while extremely useful, is underreported by a conservative factor of at least five." Why do bureaucrats continue to lie? Thank you.
And that concludes public comment.
Okay, we'll close the citizens forum, and we're on to the consent calendar. At this point, I think I'll start with, as any member of the public wished to speak to an item on the consent calendar. That was a question for the city clerk.
My apologies. We have two speakers.
Okay, I'll open that part for the consent calendar. Let's proceed.
The first speaker is Donna Caban. The second speaker is Jackie Coda. Donna Caban, please unmute yourself.
Good evening. I am addressing 4.8 about rules of procedure, and I noticed that the staff is proposing to reduce the notice time for meetings and hearings from 10 days to six days. I would respectfully ask that you keep noticing requirements to 10 days in advance to allow the public sufficient time to participate in meetings and hearings. Thank you.
The next speaker is Jackie Coda. Jackie Coda, please unmute yourself.
Thank you. And speaking of 4.8 and 4.9, I respectfully request the same, the same situation that was just commented, that the notification be kept at 10 days. Also, on 4.9, I'm respectfully requesting that you release us from the emergency orders. They are unnecessary. We don't need to have emergency orders to allow businesses to continue to have outdoor dining or for the other benefits that the city is trying to assist this community with, with regard to recovery after this fraudulent issue that we've been experiencing for 16 months. I know that the bureaucrats continually push that cases are increasing. However, not sure if you know that the most recent report came out that the FDA was actually identified that the SARS-CoV-2 antigen rapid qualitative test, the CDT's benchmark for COVID diagnostic testing, will be withdrawn for emergency use by the end of 2021 due to an inordinate frequency of false positive and negative results. The Center, Center of Disease Control Prevention announced this week that the PCR test has failed its full review, and will have the EUA revoked. It's very important that we pay attention to information and science other than propaganda, because once again, cases mean absolutely nothing, and there is no emergency. According to the Health and Safety Code 101080, you are required to terminate the local health emergency at the earliest possible convenience. But why is it that we continue with it? We've seen over the last year, Dr. Fauci corrupt Dr. Fauci and the CDC and our county health officials be wrong about everything. There never has been an extreme peril. You don't need an emergency order to continue to assist businesses and residents. So why are we continuing this? Like I said, the experience that we've had is that the flu has been just a regular flu season, and the numbers in the death count is no different than it was in 2019 versus 2020. But what I want to know is what are the suicide rates? What are the drug overdose rates? That's what I want to know. What is the anxiety rates in the county that has been a cause from all of this lockdowns and mask mandates and all of this propaganda that has been forced on the public? That's what I want to know, because people are tired of this. They don't believe you anymore. They don't believe the bureaucrats, because we've been lied to consistently. The fraud is perpetrated by some very evil people who should be charged with crimes against humanity. You are not God. You don't have any right to tell us how to live our lives. Thank you very much.
And that concludes public comment.
Okay, I'll close public comment on the consent calendar and return it to the council. Anybody desire to pull one for discussion? And if not, could I get a motion, please?
I'll move consent.
Okay, move by Councilmember Kick, seconded by Vice Mayor Monroe. We have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Carleen?
Hi.
Councilmember Kick?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Monroe?
Hi.
Mayor Werner?
Hi. Passes unanimously, and we're on to public hearings. It's a little bit more complicated than, it's similar to what we did last week. So we've got a opening. Let's see, I'll figure out how to do this properly more. opening, let's see, I'll figure out how to do this properly, more or less. So it's going to be a public hearing and ballot for the Assessment District 2021-1, Travana Road Sewer and Water Improvements. And we've heard a couple, heard this a couple of times, and now it's coming back with the ballot and everything else. So there's a script for the public hearing and I'll take us all through it. So this is the time and place of the public hearing for the City of Livermore Assessment District 2021, Travana Road Sewer and Water Improvements. And before I formally open the hearing, I have some remarks. First, some rules about speakers. Anyone wanting to speak must use the raised hand feature or star nine if calling in when the item begins. Please do not wait until the public hearing opens to raise your hand. Instead, raise your hand now. And once public comment opens, each participant's name will be announced, and their three minutes will begin upon being unmuted. When you speak, please give your name and the address of the property for which you are speaking. Each speaker may speak once and will have three minutes to speak. Second, some rules about assessment ballots. If you have not mailed your ballots, you may give them to the city clerk staff located out city hall at 1052 South Livermore Avenue at any time before we close the public hearing. If you need a replacement ballot, they are available in the same location. Just before we are ready to close the hearing, I will again ask for any more ballots. Please be sure to mark and sign your ballot before you turn it in, since unmarked or unsigned ballots cannot be counted. A representative of the city clerk is standing in front of city hall located at 1052 South Livermore to receive ballots. Once the hearing is formally closed, no more ballots may be presented. A short recess recess will be taken to gather the ballots received in front of city hall. And once the meeting resumes, the assessment ballots will be tabulated by the city clerk. Under the law, the ballots are disclosable public records and open for inspection during and after tabulation. The assessment assessment ballots are required under Proposition 218. The ballots are weighted based on the dollars to be assessed on each parcel in the district. If there is a majority protest from those actually submitting ballots, the assessment process is ended and we cannot take any further action on it. If there is not a majority protest, the council will have the authority to approve the assessments. Third, how we will proceed at this hearing. After we formally open the hearing, there will be brief presentation by staff about the assessment district and a discussion of the engineer's report. Next, we will receive oral presentations. If you ask questions, they will be answered after everybody has had the chance to speak. Depending on the number of questions, we may have a short break to comply, compile replies to the questions. After that, I will again ask for any more ballots and then close the hearing. And most importantly, your patience and cooperation is sincerely appreciated. The public hearing is now open. We will begin next with the staff and consultants' presentations.
Honorable mayor, this is Mark Roberts, your city manager, and I'm going to introduce Malika Ramachandran, our acting assistant city engineer, who's going to start off the process for us this evening with staff. Malika? Malika, you're still muted.
Can you see my screen?
No. There we go. Yes.
Good evening, honorable council members. My name is Malika Ramachandran, acting assistant city engineer for the City of Livermore. Today I'm presenting on the Travana Road Sewer and Water Improvement Assessment District. The project will replace existing private sewer and water system with approximately 700 linear feet of public new public sewer and water system on Travana Road. The total project cost is approximately $2 million. NBS prepared an engineers report that formalizes special benefit and general benefit and the method of assessment for parcels. A general benefit occurs when the improvement provides a value to the community. For example, the heightened coverage benefit to neighboring properties and past to trucking they went off a fire. Special benefit occurs when the improvement provides a direct value to the property. For example, reliable sewer and water system for the property owners. The estimated total project cost is approximately $2 million, consisting of general benefit and special benefit cost. Of this cost, the city will pay approximately $108,000 in general benefit cost. The special benefit assessment is based on benefit point calculation assessment rate as detailed in the next slides. Approximately 1.9 billion, it will be in the assessment district. Establishing the assessment district will enable the city to levy special assessment on parcels within the assessment, which will be paid over 30 years. On May 21st, 2021, the city council adopted a resolution of intention and director staff to move forward the next steps in the formation of the assessment district. NBS mailed notices and ballots to each property owner in the proposed district 45 days before the public hearing. NBS and staff responded to questions from the property owners regarding ballots and assessment. City clerk will tablet the assessment ballots after the public hearing today. If there is a majority protest, the city council will adopt the resolution banning the proceedings. If there's no majority protest, the city council will consider the resolution adopted engineers report and confirming assessment. If there's no majority protest, the next steps in the formation are this. On September 13, 2021, 2021 is when the property owners who want to pay cash can do so. There's no prepayment penalty, and property owners can pay the amount remaining the assessment at any time within the term of the financing period. The next council action is on September 27, 2021. The city council will consider resolution authorizing the issuance of bonds to finance the proposed improvements. Staff and consultants are on standby to answer any questions from this council. I would like to introduce Sarah Myers with NBS and Chris Lynch with Johnson Howard for the Q and A session. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. At this point, are there any questions from the council? I see none. We can go and continue. So at this point, we're done with the staff and consultant's presentation, or are we?
That's correct.
Okay, then we're on to the public comments from the audience. And is this public comments from anyone or just those for which they represent a property?
Mr. Mayor, this is your city attorney, Jason Alcala. Public comments can be made by anybody, but only those affected property owners can actually register a ballot for protest.
Okay, thank you. But in the instructions, it says if you do want to make a public comment, please talk on behalf, mention which property you're speaking on behalf of. But okay, so I opened the public comments from the audience. Do we have anybody who wishes to speak?
Honorable mayor, yes, we do. Richard and Terry Clinic, please unmute yourself.
I believe we're unmuted. Can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay. Honorable mayor, city council, establishment and completion of the Travana Water and Sewer Infrastructure Project is the only viable way to preserve the city of Livermore, Travana Historic Heritage District created and dedicated by the city in July 1998. The Historic Heritage District is not only home to 12 individual historic residential properties, it is also home to the Livermore Area Recreation and Park District's extended educational services headquarters and LARPD's highly popular Little House Classroom. LARPD has worked cooperatively with property owners and the city. LARPD deserves everyone's thanks for its contributions and endeavor to create the Travana Water and Sewer Assessment District. We thank the city council and city staff for their high professional and efforts in preparing to move forward with the Toronto Road Water and Sewer Major Maintenance Project. We, we thank you wholeheartedly for your patience and for the work of your team that work for the city, and as I said, for LARPD's efforts as well. So we look forward to this hopefully passing without a problem and then moving forward with the project itself. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We're now, I, we had no questions asked. First of all, is that the only person who wishes to speak, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. So we're now closing, we passed the public comments from the audience, we're into, no questions were asked. So now we're on to the final call for the ballots. And so this is the last call for ballots to be delivered to the city clerk. The public hearing is now closed. We'll now take a 10-minute break to allow the city clerk to gather all of the ballots received, and then we'll come back. So what time? We coming back on this 7:52 or what time do you want to? 7:55, you want to make it round?
Yes, I will press.
Okay, thank you. Okay, it's 7:55. I take it the city clerk has gathered all of the ballots and we're on. Okay. Okay, thank you, everyone. The clerk has had the time to gather the ballots and we're on to the step six of the process in which on camera, the city clerk tabulates the ballots and announces the results.
The first ballot here. The first ballot is in opposition. Next ballot. The next ballot is in opposition. Next ballot is in opposition. Next ballot is in favor. Ballot is in favor. Next ballot is in favor. Next ballot is in favor. Ballot is in favor. This ballot is in favor. This ballot is in opposition. This ballot is in favor. This ballot is in favor. There are no more ballots, the final results. There were 12, excuse me, 13 total assessment ballots distributed. 12 assessment ballots were received. Eight ballots were in favor. The weighted value of the assessment ballots in favor of the proposed assessments is $1,344,636.25. Assessment ballots in opposition are four. The weighted value of assessment ballots received in opposition of the proposed is $461,948.44.
So the bottom line is no majority protest exists. Is that correct?
Correct. There were more votes in favor.
Okay, one of the more suspenseful meetings we've had in a while. Okay, because we have not received a majority protest in formation of the assessment district, the assessment district will be formed. And at this time, we will consider a resolution adopting engineer's report confirming the assessment, ordering the work and acquisitions, and directing actions with respect there too. So at this point, I'll ask the city attorney, what's the process for doing the considering and adopting? I think I saw a council member with a hand up. Are we comes back to the council now for discussion and possible motion to adopt the resolution? I think that's where we're at.
That is correct. That is correct.
Okay, I saw Vice Mayor Monroe, you had your hand up, and are you asking a question or discussion, or are you going to make the motion?
I'm fine with making the motion. We've heard about this. This was one of the most terrifying, initial presentation was one of the most terrifying presentations on what can go wrong when your water's not working right. So I'm happy to make the motion if it's time, but I'm also happy to wait if other people would like to comment.
Well, they can comment after we had the motion and the second is.
Fine, I so move.
So Vice Mayor Monroe, this is your city attorney. There were two resolutions in the package. Just to be clear, you have moved the resolution adopting the engineer's report, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
I will second that.
Okay, any discussion on that motion? I, I too would want to say I'm glad to see this done. I've always. I I too would want to say I'm glad to see this done. I've always liked the Toronto Road and just the existence of that whole area and I'm glad. This is an important step to allowing it to continue. So with that, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Carley.
Hi.
Councilmember Kik.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Monroe.
Hi.
Mayor Werner.
Hi, so passes unanimously. Now, is there a second motion we need at this point?
As your Mr. Mayor, this is your city attorney Jason on call. No, as your mayor was, as your resolutions were structured. There's one resolution adopting the engineer's report. Confirming the assessment ordering the work and acquisitions to be performed. That was motion that was taken. The other motion resolution was for abandonment of the proceedings. That is since the motion passed, the vote passed, that resolution of abandonment will not be considered and. Absent any further direction from our bond council, I think you're free to proceed to next item.
Okay, so that was the end of the item and we're on to. Let's see, the next item on the agenda is six. So glad that passed the we're on to oral report with slides on the. Emergency Services Director.
Honorable Mayor, this is Mark Roberts, your Director of Emergency Services and also your City Manager. Want to start off this evening with a few updates from what we have been doing since last time, what what the. Updates from the various county and state organizations are so. Beginning last week, the Bay Area counties recommended that everyone wear masks indoors and public places regardless of their vaccination status as precaution against increased circulation of COVID nineteen. Alameda County has seen a rise in new cases specifically impacting those communities where vaccination rates are lowest. And a major milestone, more than a million Alameda County residents are now fully vaccinated. And finally, residents are encouraged to get vaccinated as soon as possible if they've not already been. This afternoon, the state has issued orders that will require all healthcare workers within the state of California. To be fully vaccinated or to return to a periodic testing for COVID nineteen. In addition, the same order also affects all state employees to be vaccinated. And those take effect on August ninth and August second moving forward. These are in addition to other employers within the state of California and the state college and university systems. Which have adopted vaccination requirements moving forward. Our seven day rolling average daily case count per hundred thousand continues on its rise for the last couple of meetings. I have reported that from our low here in Livermore of one point five cases. Per hundred thousand population as a seven day rolling average. Our numbers have increased. You can see here on the graph where we are. And on the next page, you can see that our seven day rolling average here in Livermore is fifteen point one. And the Alameda County seven day rolling average is fifteen point eight. The Livermore number is roughly ten times where we were just a little over a month ago, about six weeks ago. And the county number is about eight and a half times where they were. At this point, the prevalent variant in the county matches the prevalent variant throughout the country. And the Delta variant is a very contagious and very easily transmitted respiratory disease. And so at this point, that does appear to be sort of our major challenge both nationwide has been identified by the federal government. At the state level and then of course here in the Bay Area counties in Livermore. Our vaccination data. So first, the good news, we continue to make slow progress. So we continue to have modest increases in the number of folks who are vaccinated. Both countywide and in the city of Livermore, you can see that countywide, almost eighty four percent of folks have received at least one dose. And that's including for the entire population, twelve years and older. In Livermore, those numbers are seventeen, excuse me, seventy five point seven. Going to show a couple of slides here off of the county website indicating vaccination rates by census tract. And now, once it's displayed, it is a little bit of a treasure hunt to find out where you are on this slide, but. This line right here where my cursor is running is Stanley Boulevard. This is First Street. All the way up and here is essentially the freeway that's running across the center of. Center of the slide here. And you can see that our total vaccination rates, of course, align with the total that I just showed you. Ranging from the mid fifties in a couple of pockets of the city here. Up through the mid sixties in other parts of the city here. But you can see the pattern here and of course, some of these areas that are have the lower vaccination rates do correspond. With English as a second language areas within the community. So we are continuing our outreach to all parts of the community and also doing it in English and Spanish. You can get an idea of how we compare to the rest of the Tri Valley here in our vaccination rates. With the rates in Pleasanton being somewhat higher and the rates in all parts of Dublin except for Camp Parks. Being significantly higher here and of course, the darker colors, the darker blue colors indicate higher vaccination rates. The lighter blue colors and white indicate lower vaccination rates. Councils directed that staff continue our vaccine outreach efforts. And wanted to note that our website, social media, posters and signage and farmers market work continues. Stanford Valley Care continues their homebound vaccinations program. Coordinating directly with our Meals on Wheels and senior support in the Tri Valley. And you can see there on the slide. The contact person, which is seabrit at Stanford healthcare dot org. For those who'd be interested in taking advantage of that program. We continue to coordinate as your staff with the county and Stanford Valley Care. To provide additional mobile vaccine clinics and partner with our Facebook organizations. And you can see here that there are several of those, so starting with on Saturday, July thirty first at Saint Michael's Parish Hall. On Saturday, August fourteenth at the Saint Bartholomew Parking Lot on Enos Way. On Sunday, August fifteenth at Main Nissan Park. So all of these are free. There is no insurance required and walk-ins are welcome. In addition to these pop up events, we have standing local vaccine clinics. Stanford Valley Care has transitioned from their activities at eleven nineteen East Stanley on July thirteenth. And now they're over just right next door at eleven thirty three East Stanley. And they started that on July nineteenth. And they are taking appointments or you can walk in during their hours of operation on Mondays and Thursdays and Saturdays. And of course, for children twelve through seventeen, those are administered by Stanford Children's Health. And a guardian or parent does need to be present during the vaccination for anybody who's under the age of eighteen. Access Community Health is partnering with the city and providing vaccinations for those who would like to get them. At the Civic Center Library, it is an indoor site. And you can get those by appointment or you can walk in. So the hours of operation through July are Tuesdays and Thursdays. After that, you can check our website, the city website. And get an update on whether there's any changes on those hours going forward. And with that, I'm available for any questions.
Any questions from the council? And I guess that I just have to think before we do that, I'm going to ask if there's public comment on this and then we'll go to questions from the council.
Colonel Mayor, there is Jackie Coda, please unmute yourself.
Well, here we go again. All you talk about is cases, cases mean nothing. The Delta variant is not deadly. We're not in an emergency and you're continually to push the propaganda. It's really kind of tiring, you know, it's been sixteen months. You know, we're sick of this. We're tired of the propaganda and like I said, cases mean absolutely nothing. You consistently talk about and report about all the lies that all the bureaucrats are 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 spreading. The medical tyrants talking about forcing people to get an experimental injections. But your job is to actually protect our constitutional rights and uphold the constitution. You're not doing that. All you guys do is fear, 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 fear. We are so tired of it. It's time for us to get back to normal and to stop talking about a flu virus. And because we all know that your ultimate goal is everyone's going to bend over and grab their ankles and shut down the the state and the country once again. And we're not going to deal with it. We're not going to wear masks anymore. We're done. Masks are dangerous. No one wants to walk around breathing carbon dioxide all day long. It's very detrimental to our health and we're sick of it. So again, why don't you report the suicides? The drug overdoses, the alcoholism, the abuse, why don't you report the results of all of your decisions? Instead of cases which mean nothing, like I said. The CDC has to get rid of the PCR test because it failed. There have now been a whistleblower that's come forward that has reported that the CDC is lying to us about how many deaths from the experimental injection. There have been over forty five thousand deaths and that's just from one reporting mechanism. But why aren't you reporting that? Why are you continually pushing the fear campaign? I want to know that because we're tired of it. Why don't you actually report the facts and not the propaganda? We're really sick of it. Mr. Roberts, you are much better person than that. And I would appreciate it. I've been talking to you for months, asking you why you're not asking questions. And you don't answer the questions. Y'all just stand there and stare off into space. And do nothing about it, but roll over and let the tyrants control you. Which in turn control us. Well, we're not going to be controlled anymore and we're never going to shut down and we're never going to wear masks again. Because it's dangerous psychologically and physiologically. We're done with this.
And that concludes public comment.
Yeah, close public comment on this item. I see Councilmember Kik, you have your hand raised.
I just wanted to, two things. The event at Saint Bartholomew's, I just wanted to point out that it's not just a vaccination pop up vaccination clinic. They're also doing. A craft fair and there are gift certificates given to people getting vaccinated that day. It's supposed to be, I think they're calling it an mercadito with Latin American focused crafts and stuff. So even if you're vaccinated, you should go out and support the artists that will be at that event. And then I had a question for our city manager. If we had any data on the percent of people that are. Getting sick and if they are vaccinated or not, I've seen county data that says that almost everyone that's hospitalized is unvaccinated. And I was just wondering if we were able to get that on a citywide level at all.
No, while the county does track that data on a countywide basis and ninety seven percent of the hospitalizations now are for people who are unvaccinated. We don't have that either by the census tract data or by city data. We are working with the county to get that data. In fact, the vaccination rate data that I posted or showed you this evening is a new addition to the website. And so we'll continue to ask to see that we can get more granular data, especially related to the serious cases, those that require hospitalizations. So that we can have a little more information available.
Thank you. And my, this is a follow up question, I guess. Do we have any data about ages of people that are being hospitalized? I don't know if that's actually allowed to be reported or not. Now that I asked.
So the county does cross tabulate those and the general trend is for the folks who are being hospitalized to be getting younger. Now, part of that is the natural progression of the disease generally. A big chunk of our oldest population in the county now is extremely well vaccinated. And in fact, the youngest in the county tend to be have the lowest rates of vaccination. And they're also highly mobile and they tend to gather in groups. We see the latest spikes coming from, of course, the gatherings that were on July fourth. Which is very predictable. We all remember back in the winter that we had spikes following Thanksgiving, spikes following Christmas and so. It's a respiratory disease, so it it transmits when people get together and one or more of them has the disease. So while we're seeing the the trend be to younger folks, we don't have detailed data on that. And my guess is that they would certainly have that at the county level. We can, we can take a look for that sort of data at the county level. At the city level, that actually gets to be pretty granular, so we wouldn't see that in the census tract.
Thank you.
Anyone else want to comment or ask a question? Vice Mayor Monroe?
Oh, I'm I'm just very sad. And I just wanted to reflect that. I mean, we have children who are under twelve who are not yet vaccinated. We're seeing a variant that's. Right, you know, coming up and our vaccination rates are not where we'd like them to be and so. I guess I'd like to to ask two questions. One is. What information do we have about what's being done in other places to encourage vaccination rates? Your back to people to get vaccines? And. You know, do we do we understand what the effect is on children under twelve? We've gotten emails from people who are quite concerned about their young children with this new variant. It just makes me really sad that we can't as a community come together to protect the most vulnerable among us.
So your staff doesn't have any additional data on the timeline. Of course, we have all been informed. That the vaccines are in trials for folks who are under the age of twelve. Five to eleven is currently being tested. And just like all of the vaccines that have been tested over time, they normally go through a progression of ages. Doing adults first and then children second as they gather data. And of course, they're gathering data on all of those who have been vaccinated as well. And so with that, we don't have any further information on that, although. At least at the county level, the understanding is that by the end of the year, we should have. FDA authorization for children under the age of twelve, but we don't have any further data at this point.
Thanks.
Okay, any other comments from council? So I I have a a couple of thoughts. First of all, we talked about getting the data. And the county has the data and as to the percent of the hospitalizations, whether the. People are vaccinated or not. And in the past, the county and the state has had the data and they haven't made. They haven't had it made it as available, in my opinion, as readily as they could. They eventually did. And so I would request. Maybe a letter to the county asking them to make the data available and. And if they refuse as to why they won't make it available. Because frankly, we've seen what just a few weeks, a factor of ten increase. I don't think we're going in the right direction. I think anybody who pays attention to the world news and other countries, this is quite serious. And I don't think we can be complacent. So I would. Ask that we really push to get the data. And so along that line, are we still showing the case rates on the kiosk downtown?
We have updated that information on the kiosk several times and we can rotate the case rates back in on the kiosk downtown.
I would suggest we do that. And then the other thing is, so I'd like like us to push to get the data revealed. Because I think that data could help encourage people. And we saw that in Dublin, they've got a lot more success in getting the vaccinations out and I think it was asked. Do we have any insight as to why and is there anything we can learn from that to allow, you know, to? do we have any insight as to why? And is there anything we can learn from that to allow, you know, to improve our efforts? And do we, do we have any thoughts on that?
What we can do is certainly reach out to their staff. Um, different populations throughout the county and different communities are vaccinating at different uh, rates. But we can certainly uh, reach out to Dublin staff and county staff to see um, whether there's anything that they're uh, performing over there in Dublin that we can learn from. That'd be a great thing.
Okay. And then uh, with respect to the emergency order, it's still in place to benefit uh, the some of the businesses and residents who are taking advantage of the economic aspects of it. Is that correct?
That is correct. Um, and without that, of course, um, a- as we know, we've got about three times the amount of outdoor dining uh, than we would normally have permitted. Uh, once the uh, emergency ends, we do expect to reduce the outdoor dining back to normal levels. Um, we're taking up a significant amount of plaza space, required parking areas and other things. Um, ultimately, this is a workaround in the time when uh, people are not still fully comfortable being indoors during the pandemic. And then, of course, um, all of the uh, economic programs that are based upon uh, the pandemic itself, um, do require that the state of emergency be in place. Um, currently, there are no further restrictions as a part of that declaration. Uh, a- at this point, um, we're simply uh, basically working on the incentive portions of things at this point. And of course, we will be revisiting this um, as we are required to do. Um, and uh, once there's no longer a need for those special rules to be in place, um, we'll be removing the emergency and those uh, special permissions.
Okay, uh, thank you. And then the last question is, we're not, as a council, gonna be meeting again for what, six weeks or so? Is that right?
That is correct. Your next meeting is in September.
Right, after Labor Day. And so this is uh, going in the wrong direction rapidly. So I would uh, suggest that if need be, we we have another meeting if it's, if it really goes south.
Very good.
Be ready for that. So you'll keep us informed and we'll be looking at the statistics on this.
Yes.
Okay, uh, any other questions, comments on this item? Uh, and I take it, oh, I, I take it the rest of you are available if we need to, to get together to discuss this. Is that correct? Okay, I I see Councilmember Kick.
Yeah, just one more thing. The, at the next update, um, I know it'll be in most likely September. Um, do you mind giving an update on on what the school district is doing? I I know that they're talking and and meeting about it, but um, just, just so that we're all on the same page. We're sending that to us in a memo form.
Absolutely. Um, your staff can do both of those things is send a memo out and then highlight that uh, during our next uh, presentation um, at the first meeting in September.
I'm getting some questions from people. Thanks.
Along those lines, I'll just say that um, I've got to be giving a talk tomorrow. And one of the questions from the uh, this group was with respect to the school. So reached out to the uh, Kelly Bowers, our superintendent. And she has sent me some notes on what, what the current status is. But if um, if, Mark, if you could get, get a formal memo from her to help us be informed as what's happening, that would be good. I guess with a request, right?
Yes, we will do just that and we'll put that information out.
Okay. Well, thank you for this. Um, again, I think it's uh, we're in a serious situation here. We need to be careful. So we're on to item uh, six dot two. Uh, resolution approving a sewer revenue bond uh, refinancing by the Livermore Amador Valley uh, Water Management Agency. And it's authorizing execution of a second amended and uh, restated sewer service contract and authorizing related documents and actions. Can we have the uh, staff report, please?
Honorable Mayor Mark Roberts, your city manager, and uh, this evening, Douglas Celestio, your administrative services director, will be leading us through this item.
Hmm. Good evening, honorable mayor and members of council. Uh, as the mayor uh, just noted, to the item before United is uh, a sewer revenue refunding by the Livermore Amador Valley Water Agency or LAVM. So uh, LAVM is a joint powers authority, um, operating under an amended and restated a JP agreement that was entered into and in September of nineteen ninety-seven. Uh, in between the Dublin San Ramon Services District, DSRSD, the city of Pleasanton and the city of Livermore. BAVM operates a facilities for the receipt, transport and disposal of treated wastewater from the Livermore, Livermore Amador Valley. In order to finance the acquisition and construction of those facilities, LAVM issued revenue bonds and the principal amount of a hundred and forty-two million, three hundred eighty-five thousand in March of two thousand one. Subsequently, in order to achieve interest savings, LAVM refinanced those bonds in two thousand eleven. Based on market conditions for municipal bonds, uh, on July eighth of twenty twenty-one, uh, we are estimating that the result of refinancing the two thousand eleven bonds uh, will result in uh, twelve point eight million of savings over the ten-year term of the bonds. Um, and uh, excuse me, will result in approximately three hundred and forty thousand dollars of savings specifically uh, to the city of Livermore ratepayers annually. So uh, the resolution tonight uh, would approve the issuance of of the refunding bonds would uh, also um, authorize the execution of uh, the second amended and restated sewer service contract. It would uh, prove the preliminary official statements. Um, and uh, would also approve and authorize uh, uh, the city to execute a continuing disclosure certificate and also do authorize uh, city officials uh, to take any actions necessary and sign all related documents uh, for the bond. So um, the proposed refinancing uh, will be paid off uh, in twenty twenty, in twenty thirty-one. Uh, the same time period uh, that the two thousand one bonds originally contemplated. This is solely to gain uh, interest rate savings. So uh, the second amended and restated sewer services contract um, is is necessary. Excuse me. In regards this uh, in connection with the sale and delivery of the bonds, uh, under the agreement, the member agencies agreed to pay the cost of operating, maintaining LAVM wastewater facilities and agree to pay the respective care of the debt service on the twenty twenty-one. Uh, the preliminary official statement uh, is used by the underwriter uh, to market the sale of the bonds. And uh, certain disclosures are made in the bonds, uh, specifically about Livermore, about Livermore's wastewater um, uh, system and uh, Livermore's financial capacity. Uh, in addition, uh, we're also uh, authorizing the continued disclosures. And uh, uh, which is a required SEC document. So uh, that's all I have for this evening. If you have any questions, uh, either I'll answer them or uh, there's other folks available. Chris Lynch, who is bond counsel for LAVM, I believe is available. If there's any question, answer. And I believe the general manager from LAVM may also be in the audience.
I I think it uh, might be worthwhile just to explain to people what LAVM is. I mean, it's kind of a, not something that most people think about and even know what it does. And um, so you might just, you know, a couple of sentences on why it exists and why it's so critical. And then I think you've also said this is a uh, a refinancing basically, and we're gonna save a lot of money.
So LAVM is a a joint powers authority that owns and operates um, a a pipeline that takes treated uh, wastewater and and pushes it up and over the hill um, towards the east, east bay operators authority, which uh, treats the water one more time before discharge. So uh, basically, LAVM is a a three-member joint powers authority that owns and operates all the equipment necessary and pipeline uh, to to uh, feed our waste and dispose.
Right. And it's 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 an essential thing. We can't just let the, all the water just stay in the valley.
That is correct.
So uh, okay, at this point, um, do we have any public comment on this item?
Do not see any.
Uh, that's a question for the city clerk.
Honorable mayor, we do not.
Okay, I'll uh, open and close the public comment on this item. Any other questions, Vince, from the uh, council? Okay, how about a motion? There we go. I, Councilmember Carling. Being a member of the LAVM board.
Being a member of the LAVM board.
And do we have, and Vice Mayor Monroe?
No, second.
Okay, great. Can we have a, any discussion on the motion? Don't see any. Can we have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Carling?
Hi.
Councilmember Kick?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Monroe?
Hi.
Mayor Werner?
Hi, passes unanimously. Uh, thank you. And uh, it's always good to see money being saved. And want to thank the LAVM board for uh, and director for seeing the opportunity and taking advantage of it. We're now on to item six dot three, the final report from the Equity and Inclusion Subcommittee. Hey, can we have the staff report, please?
Honorable mayor, members of the city council, this is Mark Roberts, your city manager. And I'd like to introduce Deputy City Manager Christine Martin, who's gonna lead us through the presentation on this item this evening.
Thank you, uh, City Manager Roberts. Good evening, honorable mayor and council members. I am Christine Martin, your deputy city manager and the staff liaison to the council Equity and Inclusion Subcommittee. Uh, I'll give a brief overview before I launch into the conclusion of the uh, subcommittee's work. Um, and that is, as you recall, last summer, following the tragic murder of George Floyd in Minneapolis, the city council formed the Equity and Inclusion Subcommittee, which at that time consisted of then Vice Mayor Warner and Councilmember Monroe, and authorized the formation of a community member working group to provide information to help the subcommittee. From uh, on the-
Give me a second. Do you want to put this on the uh, presentation mode, or do you intend to? What we're seeing is the notes, uh, page.
I think we'll switch that mode out here. And we can be on the uh, on the first slide. I have the city clerk, Clay James, helping me with that this evening. Thank you, Clay.
It's okay. I was just wondering if that was your intent.
You must be just having a tiny bit of technical difficulties. Here we go. Perfect. And we can just go to that first slide. Or the next. So there we go. Perfect. Uh, so from September to December of last year, um, with the help of consulting firm Public Dialogue Consortium, the subcommittee and working group met several times to further the subcommittee's objectives and framework. And just as a reminder, the subcommittee's objective was to develop recommendations to the city council to foster equity and inclusion in Livermore through diverse community engagement that will result in a welcoming city exemplified by equity of opportunity and just treatment for all. The working group members uh, in phase one self-selected into one or more of four subgroups. And those subgroups met three times each in phase one and five times each in phase two. They worked collaboratively to develop a mission and projects that would help them accomplish each of their subgroup's goals. And in December, that first phase culminated with an interactive workshop for all working group members. That workshop provided tools and techniques using connections and sharing of stories to have difficult conversations and dialoguing with others. And then in phase two, uh, we began again in February. And prior, just prior to the kickoff of phase two, Mayor Warner appointed Councilmember Carling to take his place on the subcommittee. And a second application period uh, opened um, uh, provided an invitation to any interested community members to join the working group for this phase. In phase two, in addition to the five meetings for each of the four subgroups that I mentioned a minute ago, the consultant team also facilitated four interactive storytelling sessions, like the one held in December, where the working group learned ways to dialogue with neighbors, friends and community members to understand how unique life experiences can inform and influence perceptions. Uh, and right now, I'd like to take the opportunity to just summarize uh, each of the four subgroup's work. Um, so the next slide is subgroup A, which was community culture and representation. And their mission uh, was to um, explore how visual and physical contexts shape how we treat each other. And they developed uh, two projects. Um, and one was to provide information to the subcommittee on ways to broaden community participation in city government and um, ensuring outreach and recruitment and appointments are are inclusive of the whole community. And their second project was to uh, uh, provide information to the subcommittee on ways to make the city's communications, media messaging strategies, uh, et cetera, welcoming and inclusive and representative of the whole community. The next slide, subgroup B, was policing and human services related. Their mission was to reimagine and better coordinate public safety and human services for better outcomes. And they had three projects. The first was um, instituted and completed within phase one. And that was a review of the Livermore Police Department's use of force policies. The second was a review of the police department arrest and stop data, traffic stop data, assisted by a consultant uh, that is specializing in benchmarking and analyzing such data. And that project is ongoing um, at this, at this time. The third uh, is to provide information to the subcommittee on ways to integrate mental health clinicians within the police department to assist the officers in the field on mental health crisis calls for service. The third group is subgroup C, reaching and inspiring younger generations. Their mission was to provide resources and engagement opportunities for youth in intergenerational context. And they worked uh, to engage with youth in the community to hear and learn about their experiences in Livermore with the goal of providing information to the subcommittee on ways to to better engage youth and ensure that they feel welcome and included and represented in our community. And the fourth and final subgroup uh, focused on housing, workplace, economic and transportation environments, uh, which is such a a meaty group of uh, concepts that uh, the group ended up focusing on housing policies and practices. Um, and they prepared a workshop uh, with a series of various affordable housing-related topics to gain a baseline understanding so that that group can now better engage with the broader community about the complexities and opportunities for affordable housing in Livermore. And then on the uh, the next slide here, I'd just like to summarize all of the um, information that was shared over the course of the phase one and phase two. So the subcommittee then reviewed all of the information and suggestions generated from the subgroups and refined them into recommendations that are implementable, given current staff resources and funding. The recommendations were presented to the working group at their final meeting on June fifteenth. And then incorporating their feedback, the subcommittee then further refined the suggestions into the ten recommendations that were included in your staff report this evening. There was one recommendation that the subcommittee did not recommend carrying forward that was included in the uh, recommendations to the subcommittee on June fifteenth. And that was the recommendation that the city joined the Government Alliance on Racial Equity, or GARE. The working group did not rate this recommendation as a priority, and the subcommittee was concerned that this may be a check-the-box type of exercise that wouldn't have enough return on investment. Um, however, staff will continue. Staff wants to note that step, that we will continue to research and monitor GARE for any tools and resources that could be deployed to further any or all of the ten recommendations before you this evening. Um, and those ten recommendations, just to summarize them briefly here, uh, can be grouped into the following broad categories. Uh, they relate to key to the city, collaborations with community partners, advisory body recruitment and volunteer opportunities, housing and police programs. The subcommittee recommends uh, staff implement the work program for each of the ten recommendations as outlined in attachment ten of your staff report this evening. The subcommittee further recommends that staff provide a progress update to the city council along with their goals and priorities update that occurs twice a year. Um, and this concludes staff's presentation of the um, subcommittee's work. And I do believe that the two members of the- And I do believe that the two members of the Subcommittee would like to give a, a short presentation as well.
Sure, this is Bob Carling. I'll go first and then turn it over to my colleague, uh, Vice Mayor. Just a couple of comments, and then I'm gonna ask the chief to, uh, answer a question for me. Uh, first of all, I want to say what a privilege it was to participate and, um, all the folks that, um, came week after week to our meetings. And, uh, we had very, I thought terrific participation from the community. Some people actually came to every meeting of every subgroup. So I think that was yeoman's effort in terms of participation, but, uh, really terrific participation from the community. I also wanted to thank, uh, publicly thank Christine. She was one of the people that made it to nearly all of the meetings. I think there was one time she went to a volleyball tournament or something, and Stephanie Agidio stepped in for her. So not only to thank Christine and Stephanie and all the other staff that supported this endeavor, they do really did a terrific job. And Public Dialogue Consortium, the consultant that we hired also was very knowledgeable in this and really helped us navigate, um, some of the conversations, uh, as we went along because I think it was important to get the essence of what people were, uh, concerned about on the table, and they certainly helped to facilitate all of that. One of the things that, uh, I came out of it, at least on the last meeting of June fifteenth, as I recall, was an overwhelming, uh, enthusiasm to continue in some fashion for the people that participated. Uh, they were, I think, to a person caught up in this and want, didn't want it to stop. They weren't too sure how to continue, so I think that's something that we can consider as we move forward. But let me just say that we had plenty of enthusiasm that last evening and before that too, but I was just commenting on what I heard on June fifteenth. And, uh, certainly were eager and willing to, uh, step forward in any way they could. And in that regard, I wanted to ask the chief, uh, you know, item number ten was the chief's advisory group. And I was wondering if Chief Young couldn't describe what or how he sees that forming and, uh, how he sees that, uh, moving forward, uh, and providing advice to him, uh, in the future. Chief Young?
Yes, this is Jeremy Young, the Chief of Police, and I appreciate the question. And, uh, my thought on that recommendation was just to use the existing group that was focused on the policing issues and use that group to, to kind of start off and work through some of the questions you just mentioned as far as what should the future terms be? Um, what would the scope of work be? And we'd work together to develop that. But the first thing I think we would do is continue the work we started as far as the stop data and the, um, arrest data. As we, uh, work with the consultant, he's doing the analysis, but, uh, once he's done with that, I, I would anticipate there would be more questions and some more work that we'd want to do with the group. And so that would be my, uh, initial thoughts on the advisory group.
Yes, thanks very much. And again, that fits into the, uh, point made by several people about how they would like to continue, uh, working with the city and in this case, uh, with the, with the chief in the form of the advisor group. That's all I had. I know that, uh, the Vice Mayor would like to make a few comments. Vice Mayor?
Yes, I would. Thanks very much. Um, so, um, I would like to echo your thanks. I'm, I'm gonna go into it in a little more detail. Um, I, there's just so many people that, that, uh, I, I'm just gonna repeat. Um, so, uh, again, thank you to Christine. Um, you were given a really difficult job and you handled it incredibly well. Uh, we didn't know how difficult the job we were giving you. There you go. Um, and, um, then through the year, uh, through the year of developing the plan for the working group, making decisions about the structure and scope, incorporating new information, um, all of city staff has been, uh, really amazing. Um, so, so Christine Martin, I, I've mentioned. Councilmember Carling mentioned Public Dialogue Consortium. I wanted to make, call them out by name, Sean Spano and Bob Rucker and Jen Mayer. Um, they have said that this was uncharted waters. It was uncharted waters for all of us. Um, I also wanted to call out the story, our, our storyteller, Joel Benizy, who along with Bob Rucker guided those storytelling sessions. Um, and then, um, my, uh, partners in Subcommittee work, uh, Bob Werner and Bob Carling. Um, I, I'm the one that spanned both, um, uh, both parts of this. Um, and, uh, I will say it's true that sharing a name does not mean sharing a working style. Um, I benefited from both, uh, both Bob's working styles and I'm grateful to both of them. Um, I have learned so much from each of you, so, so thank you for that as well. Um, I, oh, I'm Stephanie Agidio and Renee Bellisong, who kept things, uh, i- i- information coming and coordinated all of that. Um, and then, of course, the people, uh, as, as Bob Carling said, the people who live and work and or work in Livermore and gave of themselves to share their experiences, to listen to others, to learn from each other, to learn from the city, and then to give feedback on what was working and what could be improved. This was really important, that what was working, what wasn't. Um, there was rel-, over the past year, there's been relatively little, um, it's, it's been little foot sand fair, uh, with a few exceptions. Um, so the work that's been done, this is our chance to share it. Um, and as I think back over it, I kind of feel like we should spend an hour or two on it. I won't do that, say thank you. Um, but I just want to emphasize how much work has been done. Um, so I'm gonna just say a little bit about that. I think Christine actually did a fantastic job of summarizing it, so. Um, yeah, um, I, I want to emphasize one more thing, which is that we did not realize when we took this on, what cities generally do is they come up with a work product and they implement it. This worked the other way around. This was, let's figure out what we need to do and then do it. And that is scary, brave, and as far as I can tell from, from the information we've gathered, unique. Um, we started to look at policing, um, and at the very beginning, um, Mayor Warner, who was then Vice Mayor Warner, and I listened to community members. And we began changing the scope right from the start, and the commi-, and the council went along with us. And we recognized the community interest was greater than expected and asked council to expand the size of, of the committee. Council agreed. So we started from the very beginning, from this process of, huh, where are we? What do we need? Let's start by listening. Um, this first phase could be characterized as a, again, a learning phase. What's the scope of the issues? What can we do? What can't we do? Um, and what are the two areas that people need in order to figure out how to go forward? One of those was how do you tell your story? Unless you feel like you've been heard, I think it's difficult to get work done. And that actually is where the storytelling track took place in, in, uh, part, part two, uh, Phase Two. Um, and the other was, how do you actually find a work product that you can implement? That was tough because some of these issues that we were looking at, um, are pretty nebulous. And so, uh, as Christine described, what we settled on was those things that the city could take, actually get done, have control of, collaborate with other groups with. Um, and so, that's, that's, that's how we went through Phase Two. Observing, um, um, okay, so yeah, uh, the working group's composition changed over the course of the year and particularly through Phase Two. It was very interesting as a, a Subcommittee member to observe what appeared to be the reasons for those changes. And, um, I will say that regardless of how long each committee member was there, whether they were in Phase One or Phase Two or both, um, we paid attention to their voices and their presences. Um, it mattered whether you were there for Phase One, whether you were there for Phase Two. So I wanted to say one more thing about the recommendations, which are that, um, they can be broken down into actually, uh, uh, those that the city can, can take charge of to make, um, include more people. How do we tell people about what the ki-, the city is at all ages, young and old? Uh, or, uh, uh, youth and adult, rather, is what I meant to say. Um, how do we collaborate with other, other members of the community? Um, uh, uh, our, our partners, the arts community, the school district, LA, uh, LARP, PD, the, uh, Las Vasitas, um, the business community. Um, what do we do with advisory body recruitment? That's part of including people. And then we focused on housing, and we're gonna continue to focus on housing, but there's still other areas, and those also can be part of this collaboration. Um, and then, of course, you've heard about the police party, uh, police programs, um, which is where we started, but not where we ended. So to come back to, to the, to the end of this, our, our suns, our, our Subcommittee sunset in June. The working group formally ended in June. And, uh, the ten recommendations we're now presenting, it's, it's up to, up to you. Um, we're not fixing systemic racism in this, though, and we're not even gonna fix Livermore. But all of these together provide a way of inclusive thinking for the city. We provide paths for building collaborations for others to continue doing this work. So hopefully, these will serve as a foundation on which to build for the future. I hope you agree. Thank you all.
Okay, thank you. Uh, before we go any further, I'll ask if there's any, uh, members of the public that wish to, uh, comment on this item?
Honorable mayor, we do. Uh, this first speaker will be Tim Kingsbury, followed by Lisa Trumovich, followed by Misty. Miss, uh, Tim Kingsbury, please unmute yourself.
All right, thank you. Um, appreciate the chance to talk for a minute or two. I wanted to thank the council for establishing the Equity and Inclusion Subcommittee and along with the participation of Mayor Warner and Vice Mayor Monroe and Councilmember Carling. I also want to express appreciation to city staff and the com-, and the committees facilitators and, and especially their enthusiasm for this project, um, which was quite noteworthy. Uh, I'm especially appreciative of my fellow participants, the group's diversity and in, in particular, their unique perspectives and stories, um, are quite impressive. Um, I believe Livermore community has many inherent diverse attributes already, such as i- its ag tradition, wineries, ranching, science and technology resources, and success of small businesses, its topography, uh, its residents, both longstanding and new. And the great mix of, uh, a downtown destination with surrounding suburban and rural districts. I think it's just a unique place. It's uniquely positioned inside the Bay Area, so it's groomed to grow and has excellent potential to continue, I think, promoting equity and in- inclusion for the community. Um, so I, I would end with one important question, I think, for all of us, and that is, and I asked this already, what does success look like? And I hope Livermore can build a successful consensus around what the city and its residents want it to look like. So thank you very much.
The next speaker is Lisa Trumovich, followed by Misty, followed by Jackie Coda. Lisa Trumovich, please unmute.
Hi, thank you, um, for having our comments. Um, and thank you to everybody that worked on these, uh, committees and all, and all of the council members and staff who hosted it. It's so important and something I'm so proud of about Livermore, that we're willing to have conversations and citizens are willing to engage. It's, really makes Livermore a special place. Um, the, then the meetings, obviously, were very well organized and intelligently held and are progressing towards, um, something that's going to be tangible, and I think that's fantastic. I wanted to, um, echo Vice Mayor Monroe's comment that perhaps the arts community can be engaged in some way and, and certainly, um, I'd be happy to receive any kind of phone call or, or missive to see if there's a way for, um, our theater company to participate. We have a cultural core group that's, um, already has been collaborating and will be collaborating in the future. And perhaps there's some way that we can, um, assist the efforts of the community groups. The, um, Hispanic Heritage Center and Livermore Shake Spark Theater are hosting, uh, co-hosting a concert this Saturday on Stockman's Park. So we have working relationships, and Calicoyle, uh, Dance of India, uh, participated last, uh, the last concert. So there are a lot of, uh, relationships already built up that perhaps we can lend to the effort. So thank you to all who participated, uh, on behalf of the city, and congratulations on your fine work, and let us know if we can help in any way.
The next speaker is Misty, followed by Jackie Coda. Misty, please unmute yourself.
Hi, I'm Misty Rose. I'm a member of the Equity and Inclusion Policing Subgroup. Um, and I'd like to echo everybody else and say thank you to everybody who was involved in this amazing project, city council staff, and my fellow participants. I would like to highly recommend that the city council accept the recommendations made by Vice Mayor Monroe and Councilmember Carling in regards to the working group. And particularly the parts nearest to my heart, the policing subgroups, three ongoing projects. We are beginning to see a strong call throughout the country and our community from mental health clinicians responding to some emergency calls, and we're seeing some positive implementations in other communities. This group has demonstrated that citizens in the police department representatives, including Chief Young, who is a very active member of our group, can have a strong productive partnership. So I think that a chief's advisory group is a natural extension of this project. Um, and I think I speak for the vast majority of our group when I say that our work on the data is nowhere near done. We look forward to seeing what we can learn from the current analysis, help figure out the most effective ways of communicating the results with the community, and helping to determine what questions need to be asked next. We had a lot of great ideas. You have a group of really dedicated citizens who have proven ourselves, um, and we'd like to keep working. Thank you.
The next speaker is Jackie Coda. Jackie Coda, please unmute yourself.
Thank you. I wanted to just commend the city staff on their participation and their presentations that they gave the subcommittees, um, that I in-, included, uh, that I actually attended. Um, I attended all of them and, um, learned a lot about the city. Uh, what I was pleased about is that there was no push for a defunding of our police department. Um, however, there was also participants that recognized that, uh, mental health and having a mental health, uh, person involved in policing requires, um, a lot more than just, uh, appointing someone, uh, Monday through Friday, eight to five. Um, it is something that needs to be seriously looked at if it ever is considered. I also want to commend the, um, city staff with regard to all of the presentations that they did with regard to communications and, um, housing, um, as well as getting away from the initial, uh, rollout or information, the notes that came from potentially databasing symbols around the city, which caused quite an uproar. Um, they did get away from that and changed the focus. The recommendations that, uh, we came up with were, um, pretty, pretty diverse. And, uh, one thing that we were, um, obviously pleased to know for facts that is there is no systemic racism in policing. The data does not support that at all, and that statement is, um, absolutely irresponsible to say. However, there is some communication work that needs to be done. Um, as we experienced as community members approaching, uh, city council member, uh, Vice Mayor Trish Monroe two weeks ago at a, a downtown farmer's market, we wanted to provide her with some facts and data with regard to masking, and she refused to listen to us and was quite rude. So there is some training that needs to be done with regard to, um, some of the council members. I do also want to commend, um, Councilmember Britney, Brittany Kick for listening to the community with regard to the concerns that we had and then apologizing for some of the words that she said on, uh, the last council. Um, we had a great experience in the Subcommittee, met a lot of really wonderful people, and it is nice to see that there are a lot of people in Livermore that truly care about our city and want to see our city go in the right direction. We would appreciate that the city council members start listening to the community more with regard to housing. And because there are a lot of people that have expressed discontent and, um, not wanting low-income housing downtown, but the city is not listening to the people. So it's time for them to take a little bit, step back, and actually listen to the citizens and not the special interest groups. Thank you.
And that concludes public comment.
Hey, a close, uh, public comment on this item, bring it back to the council. Any further, uh, comments from the council? Oh, uh, Councilmember Kick, you were talking, but did, or not, so?
Can't find my, my raise hand button. Um, but I did, I did have a question, if I could. Um, I know we had talked about, um, oh, first of all, thank you for the presentation and all-
I know we had talked about, first of all, thank you for the presentation and all the notes. That was really nice to look at, because, you know, we couldn't all participate, and I was, it was nice to be able to feel like I could relive those meetings through the notes. We talked about before having some feedback from the participants. Can we still expect, this is a question for Christine, can we still expect that there will be a survey sent out to the participants that maybe we don't need to bring it back to a meeting, but that we could at least have a memo or something sent out to council about what the participants thought about the program?
Absolutely, Councilmember Kik, that is on my list of things to do, and we're refining that right now, actually.
Awesome. And then I did have a question about kind of what you're looking for from us. I know we're receiving the information, but it was unclear to me, are all 10 of these things happening? Are we looking for, you know, do we have to pick a few? Can you clarify what the next steps are for us?
Sure. We presented, your subcommittee presents a list of 10 recommendations that are implementable. As a whole, you do not have to pick and choose. The subcommittee, I'm sure, would just welcome any feedback if there was any concern over any particular recommendation, or if there was any modification, just any feedback in general. So the 10 can all be moving forward if that is the council's desire, and that's what we're seeking, is feedback from you on that tonight.
Awesome. I was like, please don't make me choose. I did have a question about the police mental health ride-along program. I just wanted to know how this would tie in to Assembly Bill 988, if that passes. I know it passed on the Assembly floor on June 2nd, I believe. I just want to know that if we move forward with anything, we're ensuring that it could be compliant with any future potential state action around 988, which would require a mental health response team in all city jurisdictions. So that would be the only suggestion I had for the police ride-along, is that we make sure we're looking to see that we're doing what's recommended potentially by the state as it's a well-received bill. And then I also had questions about some timelines of some of the things, like key to the city, I see is coming back and the applications are out, so I'm excited to see that's happening. But what's the timeline for something like a youth key to the city, which hasn't yet been created? Are we looking at next year? Just some information.
So that's a great question. Thank you, Councilmember Kik. We would take the attachment 10, which has the very beginnings of an outline of implementation, and move forward as your staff to refine those work plans at a greater level of detail. And we will be reporting back to council with your goals and priorities update on the progress we're making with those. I think it's a bit too early to give a timeline for those items right now, but we will be beginning work on all 10 items right away. And your next update for goals and priorities is in October, so just a few short months from now, we should have a bit more detail around all of these.
That's great. Thank you for all of that, and I look forward to hearing more in October.
Okay, any other comments before I speak? Okay, I just want to say this is an incredible amount of work with a really good outcome. And, you know, at the beginning, there was a lot of emotion and concern and a lot going on in the country, and I think we took a risk, as Vice Mayor Monroe pointed out, and that it paid off. And I just want to thank everybody for taking the chance, having an open mind, and really engaging. And I think we had a good result, but there were certainly a lot of people that said, oh, what are we getting into? And I just want to thank the community for persevering on this. There was a tremendous amount of interest from the community members, and I really think this made a successful effort. And all of the people that have been mentioned for having worked so hard to orchestrate this, I want to thank them again. And having participated at the beginning, I know how hard the effort was. I mean, these were lots of meetings per week, and it took a while for everything to coalesce, but I think under the guidance of our subcommittee members and our consultants and city staff, it really worked very well. And again, coming back to the community, this wouldn't have worked without the community engaging. I'm also glad that the, you know, we really did have a diverse set of opinions, and I think it was a good that we had the police department participate in this. I think that was essential. And so I, looking at the recommendations, we couldn't have imagined at the beginning that we would have such good suggestions that I think are very reasonable and doable. So I think this, I just want to congratulate everybody for having done such a superb job, and I'll make the motion that we accept the recommendations from the subcommittee and direct staff to proceed.
A second.
Okay. And hopefully, everyone who participated will be getting some kind of certificate acknowledging what a great job was done.
Party.
Well, we can have that, too. So I think that would be really good. Actually, that's a good idea. So let's figure that out, what the thank you looks like, because this was an incredible amount of hard work. It was very well done. So could we have a roll call, please? Councilmember Carling?
Hi.
Councilmember Kik?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Monroe?
Hi.
Mayor Warner?
Hi. Passes unanimously, so incredible. I mean, we just, I mean, all of the people who were saying, what are you doing? But it worked out so well. So thank you so much. Great work. So now, we're on to item 6.4, and I'll also mention, we normally break around nine after two hours, but we broke around eight, so we'll keep going through here if that makes sense to everybody on the council. Okay, so we're on to 6.4, Resolution Adopting the General Plan Advisory Committee Rules of Procedure and Approving the Application and Committee Member Appointment Process. Can we have the staff report, please?
Honorable mayor, members of the city council, Mark Robertson, city manager, and I'm going to introduce senior planner Andy Ross, who's going to lead us through this item.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. And can everyone see my screen?
Great.
Good evening, Mayor Warner and members of the city council. On June 28th, council authorized a contract with the consultant firm Placeworks for the general plan and housing element update. And at that same meeting, council authorized the formation of an advisory committee that would provide input on key components of the general plan throughout the planning process. Further, council provided direction to staff in terms of committee size and selection. To that end, the council formed two council subcommittees, one with Councilmember Kik and Councilmember Carling, and the other with Vice Mayor Monroe and Councilmember Bonano, to work with staff on application question development and committee composition in order to assist council with the selection of committee members and ensure a broad representation of the community. So each advisory committee appointed by council has rules of procedure, which are adopted by the city council, initiating the formation of that particular advisory committee. The general plan advisory committee rules of procedure are fairly typical and generally include the following information. So information about the committee's purpose, which in this case is to work with staff and a consultant team to provide feedback as part of the update process, as well as to provide information to the community. The rules also include a description of the committee's membership, so the committee will include 15 members and four alternates who live and/or work in Livermore. And under the rules, the alternates will be required to attend all meetings and expected to fill in, in the event that a committee member no longer serves on the committee, but the alternate would be appointed by the council. In addition, the rules set the committee's duration, so the committee's term would last until the adoption of the general plan, which is anticipated to be at the end of 2023 or early 2024. And finally, the rules include information about meeting logistics and process, such as meeting location, day, time of week, sorry, day of the week, and time, public notice and requirements, and staff's role. And so in this case, the general plan advisory committee would meet on the second Wednesday of the month at 7:00 PM, either virtually or in the Menon Hall Room at the Civic Center Meeting Hall, depending on public health conditions, and city staff and the Placeworks team would provide information and support materials. So typically, forming a committee, an advisory committee such as this, is a three-part process. First, staff seeks authorization from council and direction to form the committee, which occurred on June 28th. Next would be the adoption of the rules of procedure, which are before you this evening. And then the appointment of committee members would follow a recruitment and interview process. So following council's adoption of the rules, staff will make the application materials available to the public and advertise the advisory committee recruitment through a variety of channels. Council directed staff to work with a subcommittee on developing questions in an application form to help ensure the selection process results in a broad representation throughout the community. And the application includes a number of basic questions, as well as four open response questions, as shown on this slide. The intent is to gather information on the applicant's perspectives, experiences, the issues important to Livermore's future, and how they would work with a committee and share information learned with people they know in the broader community. And finally, also ask why they would want to serve on such a committee. With the information provided in the application, staff anticipates that the council will be able to narrow the field and select qualified candidates to interview. So on June 28th, the council agreed that, given the importance of the general plan as a council priority, that the full council should be involved in the committee selection process. So staff proposes a selection process that will provide an opportunity for the full council to be part of its screening of application selection and appointment as follows. So first would be application review. Upon conclusion of the application period, staff would compile all the applications and provide copies of all the applications received to each council member for independent review and evaluation. Next would come the screening and selection of interview candidates. And so at a council workshop or a meeting, each council member would in turn select a candidate to be interviewed. After the first council member selects a candidate, candidate number one, then the second council member would select candidate number two, and so on, until all council members have selected six for a total of 30 applicant interview slots. Next would be the interviews and selection of committee members. So at a subsequent council workshop, the full council would conduct a short interview with each of the candidates. Council will then deliberate and select 15 committee members and four alternates from the 30 interview candidates. And then finally, the appointment of committee members would occur at a future public meeting, where council would appoint both the members and alternates. So staff's recommendation is that the city council adopt a resolution adopting the rules of procedure for the general plan advisory committee and approving the application and appointment process for that committee. And that concludes staff's presentation, and we're available for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Okay, are there any members of the public that wish to speak to this item, 6.4?
No, there are not.
Okay, open and close the public comment on 6.4 and bring it back to the council. I see Councilmember Carling, would you like to say something?
Yeah, I spent a little bit of time reviewing the questions. When Councilmember Kik and I met with staff about this, I had some questions about the questions. So I have a suggestion to make, and just hear me out, and I'd like to hear what other people think. So I would move question number three to number one. For me, anyway, I want to know what, first of all, I want to know what people think about the future and why, and then the subsequent questions that follow that would play into why, how, what they see for the future. So my suggestion is to move three to number one. I would then move number four to number two, because I'd like to know what their unique abilities, qualities, and experience that they would bring to this committee and how they might support the future that they see. I would move number two to number three. Again, this sort of takes the next step, is to how, you know, how they're a liaison to their community. And then for the fourth question, I would suggest something along the lines of, what other info should we know about you? And that could be things that they've participated in the community, local groups, and so on. What concerns me is the first question, you know, the first sentence in the first question, if we call these questions, is a repeat of what's above. And so that seems a bit redundant. And then we talk about a unique voice in number one and unique abilities in number four, and that seems a bit redundant. And I'm a little concerned that if we have somebody brand new to the community that wants to get involved, they may believe that community activities, local groups, and organizations may mean things that they've participated in in Livermore, and maybe they haven't, since they're brand new, maybe they haven't had the opportunity. So that's why I would like to wrap that up into number four, in terms of what else they would like for us to know, and they could include, you know, you know, when they're in graduate school, or whether or not they moved here from some other community, they were, you know, participated in their local library or something like that. And that's sort of the order, to me, that feels more natural in terms of asking the applicants to think about the future, what they bring to it, how they're going to communicate with their, and liaise, if you will, to the community. And lastly, then, what haven't we asked that you'd like for us to know about? So that's a proposal I'm making. Be glad to hear what other people have to think. Thank you.
So up next is Councilmember Kik, and I'll just say, I like your suggestions. Go ahead, Councilmember Kik.
Yeah, so I think I heard you correctly, that we would just flip this upside down, so we go four, three, two, one. Is that correct?
Let me see.
I think.
Oh, three goes, three goes to one.
Oh, three, four, two, one?
No, no, number three.
Yeah.
What are the most important issues you face, facing Livermore in the future, becomes question number one. Question number four becomes question number two. Question number two becomes question number three. And we rewrite the one that's currently labeled one as, what else should we know about you? And we could put in, for example, have you participated in community activities in other local groups and organizations, that kind of thing. I just was concerned that a new person to the community may think the way it's written today, now, on this slide, may refer specifically to Livermore, and if they're brand new, they may not have anything to add. But if we add something at the end that says, what else would you like for us to know about you? That would be the opportunity to share. That's, is that?
Yeah, I'm just trying to say it again in a way that if staff has to read, listen to this back. So it would start with number three, then number four, then number two, and then we would ask something like, what else do you think we need to know, including any experience you have in community groups in or outside of Livermore?
Much better than I did, yes, thank you.
Perfect. I think that's just fine, but we'll hear what Vice Mayor has to say.
Vice Mayor Monroe?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. I had not thought of it that way. I mean, generally, I think about these things as, who are you? All right, now let's talk about the subject, but I think it's a very clever way to think about it. Speaking to question number one, which, you know, I thought about quite a bit, actually, the intent there was to spark people's ideas, not to intimidate them. So I think your rewording makes a lot of sense, particularly if those, the examples, which is really what they're intended to be, are presented as examples, for example, then it sort of does the job of not, hopefully not. Are presented as examples, for example, then it sort of does the job of not, hopefully not intimidating. But maybe sparking some ideas. So sure, yeah, sounds good to me.
Okay, on, on that topic, we're done. And what I would suggest. It's either council member Carling or Kick that works with staff to make sure that what we said is what. Gets, it gets on the application. But which of the two of you want to do it?
I don't mind doing it.
Okay, there was your idea. So, so let's, let's have you confirm that what you suggested and we all heard. Is what gets on the application. Are there any other comments on the application? Okay, I, there's one question there that, you know, are you a caregiver? I'm not sure that's. Relevant, but does that, anybody else have any thoughts on that one?
Yeah, children. Is really what.
Not what I thought it meant, but okay.
Vice Mayor Monroe.
I, I think there was a question that was parallel to one that was taken out. It could probably be taken out with no problem.
So where are we on that one? I think it's. We can leave it, but I don't, it's just odd in my mind. So, okay, any other comments on the application? Okay, then I have. A suggestion. I would like to appoint myself and Vice Mayor Monroe to. Come up with for, what's the decision process that we're going to go through? When we take the thirty and get to the fifteen plus four. That's not spoken to in the package so far. And we need a process that will get us there efficiently. And I've, so I, so I, I will work with Vice Mayor Monroe and on our first meeting in September. We'll come back with the council approving the process and we'll also work with staff and consultants on that. So the, and then the other thing that I would suggest is that. Since we're looking for the, you know, a broad set of people to engage on this, it's a lot of work. Those are not easy questions we just approved on the application. And I would suggest that we really don't have any need to see this application. Until after Labor Day, so that we can extend the timeline for that. And then, and then we will also need to come back and Vice Mayor Monroe and I will do this. As to the schedule for how we're going to handle this. And I, in my own opinion is the, this is probably one of the most important. Subcommittee or advisory committees we're going to engage in. We, you know, with, with our community, this is something that's done every twenty years. It has a major impact on the future of the city. And if you think about it, we went through the process of interviewing planning commissioners and everything else. So personally, and this will be one of the recommendations coming back for us to talk about in the next meeting. Is how much time do we allocate for the interview? Because people are going to put a lot of work into this and I heard in the, some of the other things, people want to be heard. So we're talking about thirty interviews and we're talking about. Making sure we see who the person is. And so we'll have to come up with a time allotment for it. And we'll have to come up with how many questions that we go through. And perhaps it's only one per council member. In the past, we've done two. But so we're going to, it'll take more than one workshop to get the, get through this is my intent. But we need to spend a little bit of time now on the process and the mechanics of getting from the thirty. To the final selection. So Vice Mayor Monroe and I will figure out how to do that. And come back with the recommendations. Council member Kick.
Yeah, this is a question about the process in general, but so it can wait till the very end if you want to go over anything else.
I'm done. Otherwise, I wouldn't have recognized you.
Okay, so I, I would move that with Carling's suggestion that we. Approve this, but I do have a question just for staff about where we are in the process. I know Placework said that they were working on a, an outreach process. For getting this application out there. I'm just wondering if there's any update about that. And if not, since we're not going to be meeting again for a while, if we could get that in memo form. About what that outreach process looks like to get this application out.
Certainly, Councilmember Kick. So the Placeworks team is well underway with preparing the community engagement plan. And we expect to see a draft your staff does in the coming weeks, but we anticipated bringing that back to you guys in the fall. And then in addition, just other key work products, we're about to kick off existing conditions. We're, we're kind of mobilizing what a visioning process is going to look like and we're kicking off the housing element. So we're, we're, we're moving on a lot of different pathways here.
Okay, great. And then so from my understanding, as soon as we approve this and Carling gives the okay to staff because he'll be working on that. It's going out to the public, but that if it's due after Labor Day, that's still before we ever meet again. So I would just extend my offer that I'm willing to help staff. Put out some sort of video saying, hey, we are council and we need your help. Please apply. Just if we could work to get that going because it will be too late by the time we meet again. To figure out how to make sure that this gets out to the public in a broad way. So if that is okay with the rest of council, I'm happy to work with Stephanie. To make sure that there's some sort of thirty second snippet we get out to the public that this is happening online.
Makes sense. So at this point. Do we want to, somebody want to make a motion to adopt the revised application?
Yes, I, I think I did, but I'll do it more clearly. I move that we approve the revised.
And Vice Mayor Monroe, are you seconding or?
I am. I, I do have a question for Claire, a question of clarification, which can take place before or after we vote because it's just clarification.
No, why don't you choose second and then we'll have.
I seconded, I seconded.
Okay, so now we're into, before we have the roll call, any further discussion on the motion?
I just want to be clear. So what, where we are now is once we adopt this. The applicant and, and council, and I think I heard council member Kick say this. Council member Carling goes in, finishes off the questions and then it can, can go out to the public. And then we have a period of time where the public will apply, which council member Kick just said would go through some like middle of September. Through the, the end of the first meeting, at which point. We would come back and by that time we would have our procedures and I see that our city manager has unmuted, so maybe he has an answer for me.
So the timeline is explained as I understand it is that we would expect to get that application out this week. And that we would expect to conclude it essentially the week of September sixth, which is the Labor Day week. Which would give six weeks for people to respond. And then those applications would be sent to council in anticipation of you going through. The first step in the process that was outlined in the presentation this evening at one of your meetings in September. And then in parallel, you are correct, there is a subcommittee working on the process of doing the final design of the interviews themselves. How long they take, when the dates would be, how many meetings that spread over and how the process would work overall. And that also would be presented back to the council at that same meeting.
Good. I, I just wanted to make sure that we weren't delaying the applications going out by the work that we, we were doing on that. So good, we're not. So great.
In addition to that, in parallel, there'll also be a, a process to reach out to the community to let them know that the applications are though. And that will also include some sort of video.
Okay, any other discussion there? Because otherwise we'll have a roll call.
Mr. Mayor, this is your city attorney, Jason McCullough. Just an inquiry for Vice Mayor Monroe. Does your motion include the moving staff's recommendation for the resolution, the general plan advisory committee? Or, or are you just focusing on the application itself? Sounds like it's.
I was, I was seconding council member Kick's. And I thought it was both, but I, that's what I intended to do. I'm assuming that's what she intended to do, but ask her.
Okay, so as I understand it, the motion is to move the resolution in your staff packet with the direction and clarification provided by your city manager. And we have a first and second on that. Back to.
Also with the revision suggested by council member Carling.
That is correct. And that was incorporated in the, what Mark had articulated.
Hey, and I see council member Carling, you have more discussion before we vote?
I just want to, where are we? It seems like a long ways off September sixth, six weeks. Is there a reason for that?
Well, our next meeting isn't until the thirteenth.
Sure, and we'd have to make some decision, we'd have to read all the applicants and make some decisions personally during that week. Is there, because we need to be prepared to do the drafting on the thirteenth, is that right?
Is that, the thirteenth, we pick the thirty?
That's what I'm asking.
Staff's initial proposal was that you do that. And we believe that if the applications were turned in by the seventh, we could get those out to you essentially. On the eighth, that would, that would leave several days. Or if you'd like, either the thirteenth to be pushed off to the twenty seventh.
No, I'd rather have the applicants do earlier. You can give us more time before the thirteenth. I don't want to push getting started any further. I just am concerned about.
How, how much time do you need?
Well, I say a couple of weeks. I don't, I don't, I mean, if we're going to get it out this week, say they're due the end of August.
Okay, that, that gives us, that gives them, well, okay.
Councilmember Kick says no, so.
Just worried that that's not going to give enough time for us to reach underreached populations. Which is why I was hoping for a longer application period. So maybe we push it back to September first. Or I guess that is the end of August, but I liked, I liked after Labor Day. Just because I know it'll probably be a while before we get that ad out there, to be honest.
So if, if I could say something, you know, this is a multi-year effort. And I think taking the time to give people the time to apply is better than trying to meet the thirteenth. So I, I, I think that maybe the way through this is. Agree with council member Carling's suggestion that we have two weeks from the time that the applications come in. To the time we have the meeting where we take. Get them down to the thirty. So I think, and we'll, we'll get the process going for this, but I'm looking at September. We have our regular council meetings and we're going to have workshops and this is important. So I think we, maybe it works. So we just. Give people until after Labor Day and then we push it if we need to, to the second meeting in September. But we'll come up with a process here that works. But I agree with council member Carling, two weeks to review the applications. Could it be, could be a considerable number. So let's see, where are we? Where, council member Kick, you have your hand up from before. Or is that a new one? But I also see Vice Mayor Monroe wants to speak. Vice Mayor Monroe.
Right, I, I want to speak to having the longer application period. We're talking August. People go on vacation. People, I'm expecting fires to happen and those are a little distracting. You know, at least they were last year. Who knows for this year? So I, I feel pretty strongly that I, I would agree with. I, I would even extend it to the thirteenth and that would be totally fine with me, although, you know, I'm also fine with right after the, the, after Labor Day. I absolutely agree with the two weeks and I just, you know. In this process, pushing it out two more weeks isn't going to hurt anything.
Okay, so how about if we do this after Labor Day? I think that's enough. And that gives us a week between after Labor Day and the council meeting. So that we can at least make sure that the process we designed makes sense. How's that? Are we good? Everybody's kind of nodding. All right. Do we need to restate the motion at this point?
I just want to clarify that the process will come back on the thirteenth. But most likely, the first meeting that we could deal with the applications would be the twenty seventh. Or perhaps a workshop meeting, but that, that will be, that will be finally decided on the thirteenth. Is that correct?
Yeah, and I'm thinking the twentieth is when we go to the thirty. Very good. It's possible, yeah. Or does that do it? Yeah, I don't know, maybe not. Anyway, we'll figure it out. But that's right, the twentieth. It comes back to six, then the, the twentieth is the two weeks.
Very good.
So that, that can, could conceivably work and then that way we're only maybe losing a week. Okay, so is the motion clear enough?
Yes, I think your staff understands.
Good. Is the city attorney good with us at this point?
I'm comfortable if your city manager's comfortable.
Oh, excellent. So we're all comfortable. So let's have a roll call.
Councilmember Carling?
Hi.
Councilmember Kick?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Monroe?
Hi.
Mayor Warner?
Hi. Okay, we are now on to item. Seven, council committee reports and matters initiated by the city manager, city attorney, staff and council members. Let's see, council member Kick, I think you'll go first.
Yes, I will. I did my form, not a lot to report on about meetings. I did get to go to the farmer's market again with Horizon's Mental Health and our Livermore Police Department staff. And that was good. I learned a lot about Horizon's mental health that I did not know. So I appreciated the education for myself as well. And I did have a matters initiated, kind of. Because of what we talked about in the equity and inclusion subcommittee and tying back to our climate goals. I was wondering if staff could bring back the presentation about sign usage in elections. Again, I know that you talked about it a couple of years ago as a potential option for election equity. That was one thing I didn't see. In the equity and inclusion conversation, if there, I know that not only has the council changed. But there's also some law changes about what cities can spend money on in supporting election equity. Be it publicly funded elections, be it a mailer like the city of Santa Rosa does. On, on a timeline that makes sense to staff if they can bring back some potential recommendations on how we can give greater access to elections. To people that might not have personal wealth to, to do the startup costs.
So to clarify, there appear to be two pieces to the issue. One is to at least revisit for further direction, whether the council would want to modify our sign regulations dealing with signs in the. Public right of way, not on private property. And what options are available to localities to provide greater access to election information. As a, as a part of an overall process. Is that a, were there other items? Okay, and with that, is there concurrence from the council to bring back an item for consideration to future meeting? I see one, two, three. Okay, very good. Thank you.
Okay, are you finished?
Yep, that's it. Thank you.
Okay, council member Carling.
Yes, thanks. So on the thirteenth. Vice Mayor and I had a meeting with the homeless staff, oh, sorry, the housing staff. Within the city, there's a particular. within the city. There's a particularly attractive funding opportunity, and so we had a nice discussion about that. On the fourteenth, there was a reception for our new head librarian. I think Mr. Ponto talked about Anwan Baker earlier, and we certainly all welcome him to the city and look forward to working with him representing the library. On the fifteenth, Vice Mayor and I were at the farmer's market. And then on the sixteenth, I had an Altamont Landfill Open Space Committee, another really interesting meeting. So that's all, that's it for me, thank you.
All right, you say it was an interesting meeting. Do you want to tell us what it was?
Well, it was once again about Carnegie and the ranch. Those, I don't know, how many acres is this? Maybe you know.
You mean the N3 Ranch?
Yeah, N3 Ranch, and the new software that they've developed to allow you to look at the open space. And then there was a proposal for continuing to look at crossing of wildlife along the five-eighty corridor in the Altamont. It's an interesting study with cameras looking at the wildlife that tries to cross five-eighty there, and are there ways in the future? Nothing yet today, but in the future, are there ways to help the wildlife cross safely from one side of five-eighty to the other? So.
I, if I could, and the question I, I was thinking you were going to talk to is the N3 Ranch. And we were talking about using some of the Altamont Open Space money to help acquire that. But I, last I heard, that was not likely anymore because of a second offer. Did you get, or some offer that came in, do you have any?
There's some offer, but there seemed to be a question about whether the offer had been withdrawn or not, and/or whether or not a second bid would be accepted by the broker. That was all confusing, and Mr. Wilson, I don't think, knew the answer to those questions during the meeting, anyway.
Okay, so there's still hope?
There's still hope.
Okay, all right, thank you, because that's a, because it's a complicated transaction, but there's still hope that that major ranch could be saved.
Apparently, somebody want, somebody's thinking about the first offer, I don't know. And again, this is still unknown, they want to create a whole new city?
Oh, yeah.
Wow.
No, that's the danger, so, yeah.
Jeez, okay, well, we'll see.
And the other thing I think people should realize, where that ranch is, it's, you know, butts up against Del Valle, and then it goes towards Mount Hamilton.
Right.
But there's been talk of a major road from the Central Valley into San Jose, right through that area. So this is a, it's a big deal whether or not that ranch gets saved or not, that's why I asked. Okay, Vice Mayor Monroe?
All right, well, I have a couple of things. First of all, I, I did want to respond to Jackie Cota. She's right, actually, I do owe her an apology, and Jackie, I do apologize. Actually, I was very upset with that interaction. Came back to City, City Hall, actually, the next day, and asked for some training, because I was not particularly happy with my response. I wasn't quite sure how, how to have the discussion with you about subjects about which we so deeply disagree. So, so I do apologize. And hopefully, the next time, I'll be better prepared. So with that, I actually, that's one apology. I'll continue with another one, which is that, you know, this is, this could just go on all night. So I had planned to attend a graduation for Partners for Change. And Wednesday night, the twenty-first, I began to get ready for it and made a phone call and discovered that it had happened on the twentieth. So I, I told Officer Art Roses that I just wanted to give a shout out to those people who had made it through the program of Partners for Change. Partners for Change assists tri-valley families in achieving financial self-sufficiency. It takes people who are right on the edge, helps give them the tools for becoming economic, for economic improvement. It's a fourteen to twenty-week life skills course. And I was really excited about going. Unfortunately, when you miss the program by the day in the wrong direction, you don't get to go backwards in time. So, but it does give me a chance to give a shout out to Partners for Change. So that was, that was a couple of things. And now I can actually move into things I don't have to apologize for. Continuing, I also attended the homelessness Subcommittee meeting, but I think Councilmember Carling covered that quite well. I did want to have a couple of pieces of good news around Goodness Village, though. Twenty-five people have been assigned to twenty-eight homes. And as of July twenty-first, there are at ten people who have been placed in the housing itself. I mean, as opposed to assigning, they're actually in. ADA ramps are still under construction. Changes range from twenty-seven to seventy-six. Most of them are from Livermore. Some have been, they've been homeless for, for as little as a year to as much as seventeen years. Several of them are, there's a range of employment, and they've come from a variety of places, the referrals have come from a variety of places. They, there were seventy-nine online referrals, and fifty-seven people submitted completed applications. So it's pretty exciting to see Goodness Village going forward, and I did want to, you know, bring that out. And I wanted to thank Josh Thurman for providing that information. So, and then finally, I, I noted this on my report out sheet, but I did want to mention the League of California Cities East Bay Meeting. We had a presentation on the broadband package that is, is coming, coming out. And it, I, I wanted to spend a little bit of time talking about it. In looking at it, it's a huge amount of information that, that starts with discussing how the state's going to fund the Middle Mile, which is basically that, the area that's most difficult to fund, into how to work with cities themselves to fund the most disadvantaged, where there's less broadband coverage. And so I, I, I think I'm going to hold on to that and see if there's a better way to get that present, that material out to people, because I think it's interesting and important, and probably too long for right now. So that's all I have for right now, thank you.
Okay, thank you, and I also want to apologize, it didn't get on my calendar, but I was, the Partners for Change, Vice Mayor Monroe and I were going to go, and it was like, oh, what happened? It wasn't on the calendar, so screwed up, so we'll try and do better next time. I had a, the, had a couple of the Alameda County Mayor's Conference meetings that are mentioned. And again, one of them was on the homeless working group. And the question there is, how do we make sure that the various monies that are going to be made available from the state and from the federal and through the county? How is it apportioned? And so that's something we were watching pretty carefully. Had a chance to, was invited to give a talk at the Morning Rotary Club, early morning talk. It's not like I'm necessarily awake at that time, but I enjoyed the, the meeting, and it's a fun group of people, a lot of energy. And so with that, I think we're now adjourned for until September thirteenth at seven PM, held virtually using Zoom, so good night, all.